Regular council meeting of July 26, 2017. Could I rise for the pledge, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mary Nieves.
Here.
Mr. Magistrally.
Here.
Ms. Domsalski.
Here.
Mr. Hips.
Here.
Ms. Noack.
Here.
Mr. Voitish.
Here.
Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Mr. Wasowski.
Here.
Sergeant Zolgas, Chief Boston, Mr. Walters are absent, and I am present.
Did we get the approval of the minutes, please?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Noack, seconded by Ms. Domsalski, to approve the minutes of the July 12, 2017 regular council meeting. Any amendments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of passage?
Yes.
All opposed.
At this time, is there anyone in the audience that has anything to address to us tonight? If so, please come up to the podium, sign in, and press the silver button. Hearing none, moving on. Reports of municipal officers, at this time, the mayor does not have any report. I will probably have a report in the next month or so regarding the hotel. Moving on to finance director, Mrs. Ingracia. Got that right this time.
Okay, so I met with First National Bank of Pennsylvania on Thursday last week about changing banks. It's not that I'm dissatisfied with the service at Huntington, but they're offering a little bit better rates for the services and the analysis, the charges associated with it, the checking account, and also setting up a sweep account for interest earnings. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that, or if you're just gonna let me roll with it. So, I have...
I think everyone up here pretty much trusts your judgment.
Okay. Well, I have depository agreements for you, and I would like to get this done hopefully by October, be completely transitioned, and so that's that. Are there any questions? Nope? Okay. Next, I received a phone call from the Auditor of State's office regarding the new funds that we created, and they did not approve them. The Property Improvement Fund, the Hydrant Maintenance Fund, they indicated that they do not agree with setting up a fund to track these expenses separately. And I said, "Well, I've been in other communities," you know, everybody has these funds, and they said that they changed the rules according to Gazby's rules, and now this money has to be tracked in the general fund. So, in the general fund, I have created a sub-account for Hydrant Maintenance, and I will do the same for Property Improvement. I might just add that to land and building, I'm not quite sure I'm gonna do that. But they nixed it, so I'm just letting everybody know that was a no. So you'll see, to my next, on the amendments and to the appropriations and transfers, you'll see me removing the contractual services and utilities from the newly-created Hydrant Maintenance Fund, that was the 405 Fund, and creating new lines in the general fund, and that's the 108,000 accounts. Additionally, I'm reducing the capital for land and building because we agreed that we were going to use that money from the parking lots and everything that we said we would put off to increase the funding for the presidential subdivision. Also included in the amendments is an increase for the Kennedy Boulevard sewer install, that's the 125,000, and Jason Walters needed a lateral line attachment for the sewer camera, and that's going to increase the capital. And then there is another $1,000 increase to the law enforcement trust for police business. If you want more specifics, I'll let Brad answer it. And then the transfers, you know, go in line with the presidential subdivision increase, the sewer maintenance increase for the sewer line on Kennedy, and the removal of the Hydrant Maintenance transfer that we had last month back to the general fund. So, does anybody have any questions?
Trish, I have one. The capital for the Kennedy sewer, Jason had stated that it was $2,000 for that piece that he needed. Why are we, is it, why is it 5,000?
No, that was 2,500, and that was for, it was a different attachment from M-Tech. Do you know what I'm talking about, Rich?
Yeah, they had to put a different attachment to get the roots out of the cutter for their cleaning attachment.
That was what he requested last time. This is for a lateral line attachment for the sewer camera. I don't, I don't know...
That's for the small lines coming into the main line, you need a special attachment to photograph the small lines. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that concludes my report.
Moving on to Mr. Wasowski, the engineer.
Okay, today I met with the project superintendent for the presidential subdivision for Carvo. He wants to begin the sewer work on August 7. He's gonna, the fellow that makes, in charge of making the catch basins, is on vacation this week for Mac Industry. He'll be back next Monday, so he's gonna talk to him about getting those basins as soon as possible. He thinks he can get them within a day or so. And then he has to move his equipment up here, and they're gonna start the sewer first. I asked him about milling the whole subdivision as soon as possible. He's gonna, he doesn't do the milling himself. He's the general superintendent, the whole job, but there's a foreman for the milling itself. They're gonna see if they can move up the milling earlier until maybe the week after that. Hopefully, right now, it's scheduled towards the end of the month, end of August due to milling. They're still gonna, they still plan on getting done by the due date, which is roughly October They are very concerned about additional curb removal. He's of the opinion, what we're paying him for the curb, to remove the existing curb and replace it is not adequate, it's outside the scope since it's a curb and gutter. He has to cut that gutter. And I said, "No, it's not an extra for me, it's incidental, cutting the gutter." He said he can't make that decision for the company, he's gonna have to have the owner of the company decide what he wants to do. I don't wanna deal with these people on this like this, so... We went around, looked at the whole subdivision. We are gonna try to minimize the curb removal, but I think we're gonna have to meet on that to see where, how much we wanna spend on curb removal. The handicap ramps, he asked me about the handicap ramps, and Al, Mr. Hips brought this up too. The ADA Act says that if you're, it's now, if you're resurfacing the road now, and you have concrete sidewalk, or you have sidewalks and curb, you have to put in handicap ramps when you're doing the resurfacing now, unless it's not feasible. Not feasible, they define as if you have manhole covers in the area where the handicap ramps are, and we have two of those areas where we have manhole cover right where the ramps, you don't have to do it at that time. Or I rule, in our case, if we built handicap ramps out there today where the sidewalk is, not one handicap ramp we build would meet the requirements of ADA, as far as slope goes. We have to rip out all the sidewalk, the sidewalk's all non-conforming, non-conforming out there. All the sidewalks totally non-conforming for handicap people. We'd have to rebuild all the sidewalk, then build the handicap ramps to get the correct slope, which is one on 12 maximum. I feel it's, I rule that as being unfeasible to spend a bunch of money to build something that doesn't meet the code. And when we, the plans are, when we rebuild those streets, we are giving everybody a new sidewalk, which will be compliant with ADA requirements, and new handicap ramps, which will be compliant with ADA requirements. So unless somebody sues the village and gets a judge to rule otherwise, I don't plan on putting any handicap ramps in on this project. If worse came to worse, and the judge ruled we had to do it, we'd issue that as a separate contract. That's about $70,000 worth of work for the handicap ramps alone. And the sidewalk, I haven't even estimated the sidewalk, that's a couple hundred thousand bucks at least. And I don't wanna get involved in that until we actually do the complete roadway, where we'll get, well, everything will be up to code when we do the complete roadway. So I'm leaving that go right now. And we heard a couple complaints when we did Houghton Road several years ago, but on Houghton, we had the manhole covers there, so that was an easy one that, it says right here in the regulations, if you have a manhole or a vault, you don't have to rebuild that manhole and the vault to put a handicap ramp in, until you do the whole roadway. When you do the whole roadway, they say, "Yeah, since you're doing the whole roadway, you're spending enough money for the whole road at a smaller amount for the manhole where that is justified." But repaving, no, you don't have to do that. So, that's where we stand on that. Ledge Road, I'm sure everybody noticed, finally got the contractor back to do the repair work, where we're holding about $82,000 of his for the last nine months now. I wouldn't pay him because with our contracts, if we put concrete slabs in, if they crack, you have to replace them. And they had four slabs that cracked, and we told them last December, when we did the final punch list go-through, but we didn't want them pouring during the wintertime, so we said, "Come, we'll come back next spring and do them." And we met with them, like, May 2 or 3, Jason and I, and he told us at that time he's gonna be back within a week to do it. Well, it took a long while of me bugging, and he finally told me about 10 days ago he'd be back on Monday, when he did show up on Monday. So they, they actually took out six slabs. So they took out six slabs, they're all poured now, they put in MS concrete, which sets faster than regular concrete, so by Tuesday, they'll open up the road again. They have some touch-up work behind the curb to put dirt in and seating. They're gonna cut the slabs tomorrow, and they're gonna reseal a bunch of joints tomorrow, and then the only thing left after that is to flush out the sewers, which it can get done easily in a day if they get the equipment up here. The foreman on the job was a concrete foreman, he had no idea when a crew would come up to flush the sewers. I'm hoping they come up by Tuesday, and we won't have to close the road for flushing. They'll park their vehicle on the road, they'll shut down the lane while they're flushing them out, but there'll be, should be just one day to do that. And once he's done with that, we'll accept the project, and we'll pay him his $82,000. Let's see. And the reason I basically came here, the mayor asked me to come to this meeting, was last Saturday, we had a very large storm last Saturday here. We were actually the largest storm in the Cuyahoga Summit County area rainfall-wise. We had 2.11 inches of rain in a one-hour period. A 25-year storm is 2.09 inches, so we're almost exactly a 20, 25-year storm. That storm concentrated, it was the gauge at Macedonia on the pump station on 82 near Route 8, just west of Route 8, so it's real close to here. So we have real accurate values on the rainfall. In my office in Strongsville, they had, in the same hour, they had like .35 inches. In the valley, at Valley View, they had about .65. We had the most of, I think, the 25 gauges in the area of Cuyahoga County, that Macedonia was the top. Oakwood had, Oakwood's gauge actually measured a 10-year storm, and we had the 25, so we had the worst case. Macedonia, that's got hit pretty hard. We had flooding down at Russo's Pizza area, that building with the flower shop and the Chinese restaurant and Russo's. We had some flooding at the east-west apartments on Lincoln, that area, but we've had flooding there before, and that was, before when we looked at, it was their sewer system, not ours, it was their sewer system, it was a problem. We had a couple houses back here that had some problems. Actually, once, we've only had one structure in the village that will handle a 25-year storm. That's what we put on Beach Avenue, by the Service Department, on Beach Avenue, behind the Service Department. That will actually handle a 100-year storm, that culvert we put in. The rest of our system was designed, as far as I could tell, for less than a five-year storm, that's flowing full. And the pipes crossing Route 8, they're a little bit less than a five-year storm, it looks like, and they dump into a pipe that's actually smaller. There's a 48-inch pipe that goes along the Russo Building, it's not his building, I call it the Russo Building. There's a 48-inch pipe that goes into Theus' yard and dumps into the creek. That pipe's actually smaller than all the pipes that come into it, so it's a bad situation. But the part about the Russo Building flooding is basically the building. Whoever built the building really did a terrible job building the building. If you're familiar with it, the doors to the building, the four doors that go into it, are at the exact level of the parking lot. There's no raised-up curb, like, normally you'd have a six-inch curb there, and the water came down, and they're in a hole, they're way in a deep hole. When the water comes down, they have a four-inch wide trench drain with a four-inch outlet. In July of 2015, I had discussions with the building property owner about problems he had back then, and I told him that he had to hire an engineer to figure out how he's gonna stop this floodwaters from coming into those buildings. And, and the guy gave me some calculations, engineer, and I looked him over, and I said, "This isn't adequate." First of all, you have to design that for at least a 25-year storm, these floodwaters. And I said, "I think you need at least a 12-inch diameter pipe." He has a four-inch diameter pipe now. A four-inch, that's six, 36, a 12-inch diameter pipe will carry 36 times as much as a four-inch diameter pipe at the same grade. He never put it in, never did anything about it. So, and the building, being in a hole like that, if you'd have raised the building up, like, the building next door to him, which is raised up, didn't have any flooding whatsoever in it.
Just talking about the Zeppe's building?
Zeppe, yeah, yeah. That didn't have any flooding at all, we went over and talked to the people there. So, a big amount of the problem is his. We have a certain amount of problem, and our storm sewer, when those storm sewers were built, they were, the standards back then were generally in the range of a five-year storm. Now, in most areas, it's a 10-year storm, and in commercial areas, we're up to a 25-year storm design. That's the new standards of 25-year storm designs in commercial areas. If we wanna go to code, if we wanna go to the standards now, we'd have to replace the sewer across Route 8 and replace the sewer from Route 8 right away to Mr. Theus' channel. The problem we get into there is, suddenly, if we open up and put correct-sized pipes in, when the rain comes, it's all gonna go through those pipes onto Mr. Theus' area. Mr. Theus' channel was originally only four foot wide. If you go down there now, look at it, that whole channel, it's probably 10, 12-foot parts all the way down to Beach Avenue. So we transfer a problem somewhat down to downstream owners there. We can eliminate that problem by, if we can get the Corps of Engineers to agree with us to culvert the whole thing, it would take an eight-by-four-foot box to do this. We're talking at least a half million dollars for that work, probably more like $650,000 to do all that work. Then, we transfer the problem down to the Service Department, where we have, right now, on Beach Avenue, we have a 10-foot-by-four-foot box, which is the only thing in the village that's adequate for a 100-year storm. We built that with money from Issue 2, emergency funds, when Beach Avenue flooded about 15 years ago. The pipe going across the Service Department's a 48-inch pipe, which is too small. If we get the water down there, it's too small. We basically have to double that to have two 48-inch pipes to get it into the big valley a little more...
So, Rich, we're basically just pushing the problem downstream?
Yeah. We would keep pushing it downstream until we got to past Victory. Past Victory, there's a big channel, and we can push it there, and it's not gonna bother anybody down there at that point. And we had a grant, when Mayor Maloney was here, to replace the pipe from Victory Boulevard all the way up Houghton to where the culvert starts now, or where the big ditch is. We're gonna, either we can put another 48-inch pipe in there, or we just take out the whole existing one and put a big box in there. We had a grant for that for $420,000. The project's 420, we had a 50% grant of $210,000. We had to turn that back, because we didn't have any, we didn't have our $210,000. Basically, we were broke at that point. So, we held it for two years, and a two-year period, we couldn't come up with the money, so we had to turn it back. But that's, that's a long-term thing, so I know we talked a little bit about the sewer fund, like, eliminating it, and I'm talking the opposite thing, I'm talking about doubling the sewer fund. Because we get about $200,000 or so in a year as sewer fund, and if you really wanna do any of these projects, even with Issue 1 or Issue 2, one grants or loans, with what our maintenance cost on the whole sewer system is, we don't have, if we collect $200,000 a year, we don't have enough money in that fund to be doing capital improvements. We have enough money basically to do maintenance. We have to jet out our sewers. Every year, we're on a program with our permit we have, stormwater program, to jet out so many sewers. We have to do at least 1/3 of the village each year, every, in a three-year period, we have to clean all the sewers over a three-year period. We can do them all in one year, or 1/3 of them each year, whatever way we wanna do them, but... And we're paying for a sewer jet still, I believe. Is that all paid off now? Good. We still paying for the cameras and all that, that's all set up too. Okay. So we, we paid for a lot of equipment now that we have, which is good, but still, the maintenance costs of the guys, like, the sewer jet, I think they use a five-man crew when they do that work.
That's correct.
So that's, it's pretty expensive per hour to do the work, to do the maintenance work on that.
And that's minimal for five guys.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, yeah, did you tell me we have $75 bucks or something in the fund now?
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, $75. We're not building anything with $75, I can guarantee you that. I don't care what kind of grants I can get you, it's, there's...
I haven't entered the revenue from the billing that's out right now, but that is, as of today, right now, the sewer fund's $75.
Yeah. So one thing that the mayor brought up, the only way to not transfer the problem is to build retention facilities, like we have at the racetrack, our Roxina has a big retention pond, the Three Steeple Chase developments have retention ponds, our industrial park by Meadow Lane has a big detention pond. And the only place to really put it is in the shopping center. And that land is worth quite a bit of money. So you have to pay for the land, and then you have to pay for the cost, then you can, if you wouldn't transfer it, you store water there and let it out slowly over time, so you eliminate flooding and... But it'd be a big expense if you wanna do anything about this.
I think it's something we should put into a work session with council.
So that's, that's where we stand on this, so we really, for a 25-year storm, the village came out actually in extremely good position, because most areas, if you get a 25-year storm, you got really major flooding. And we had really, my position is on this, I don't care if the roads flood for an hour, we'll live with it. I just don't want anybody's basement having water in it. And I don't even, I'm not too concerned about if you get some water in your garage, I don't want any water in anybody's house. And we've been fortunate that, that's due to our sewers. We, we're very fortunate in that respect, that we have very few problems there. And that building, that's just, I really don't know how much the village should spend because the building is, you know, the guy shot himself in the foot when he built a thing like that, and this is our responsibility to spend a bundle of money to try to relieve it? I don't know. His, the owners are the landlord, he's saying, "Well, somebody let them build a building like that." It's commercial building, though, and we don't regulate commercial buildings, so...
County.
County does, so I don't know, back, I don't even know when it was built. Whenever it was built, I certainly wasn't here then, and I don't know if anybody else was here then that's on, around anymore. So I don't know the history of why it was built like that, but it's obviously a poor job of constructing a building.
I definitely think we should do a work session on this. Mr. President, what do you think?
Well, we'll probably have to do it sometime in, in August.
I was thinking like mid-August?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna work on this with all my other engineers on the retention basin to give you some idea what the size would have to be for that and the cost on that.
Is that something that you could have by mid-August, Rich, or do you need some more time?
The engineer's gonna help me, he's on vacation this week, I'll, I'll talk to him when he comes in Monday, see if he can get on there with me right away. It'll, it'll take me a couple weeks.
You wanna do more at the end of the month, then?
Like, maybe the third week would be the best, third week in August.
Rich, why don't you get every, all your information gathered, whatever you need, and then get in touch with me?
I'll do that.
And then we'll set it up.
Okay.
Rich, moving forward with kind of stormwater education for the village, I know that we've got those requirements from our, for our rain gardens and whatnot, that we have to do those improvements. Can we turn this into an education program to kind of explain stormwater and how, how property owners can help the issue? owners can help the issue? That if they're mitigating the water on their site, that they can get kind of some of the refunded money from their sewer bill? And then also to help the village with the amount of water going into the sewers that can run downstream?
The regionals actually had some seminars, I've been to them, where they were for the community. They haven't had it in the Village of North, but they actually had them down in Peninsula in that.
Can we get them here? Could we contact them and get them here? So that we get a better understanding as council? We're not engineers up here.
Sure.
You understand stormwater?
Yeah, we can get them up here. I'm not sure if the regional will come, but Sandy Barbick, who's the educational person for Summit County, the Pipe Committee, which we are involved in, I'm sure she would come up. In fact, we had one at the concert, a couple weeks ago up at the park. Sandy was here, and she was also in Sagamore Hills at their concert, too, to talk about all this stuff. And I can tell you, I sat with her up there, and I think we had maybe three or four people came over during the whole, she was there for a couple hours during that time to talk to her, all the people were there.
A lot of people there, too.
Yeah, they don't, it's, and like the ones I went to Peninsula, I would say maybe there was, oh, 50 people from like five or six different communities in northern Summit County there. And I generally see on these seminars I go to and that, and presentations, I see a lot of the same people in different communities. There's a sort of a core group that interests. It's extremely difficult to get people involved in this. Even the rain barrels, we had, before the court case, we had four people in the village that applied to get rain barrels, to get the reduction in their, the stormwater fee bill, four out of the whole village. And I haven't heard of any since then. Normally, the regional, the regional's supposed to call either me or Jason to tell us, "Somebody's applied, would we please look at that property, see if it's applicable that they put a rain barrel in, that it's going to do something?" And they haven't called me since the court case was decided on anybody. It just, I just think that most people are sort of apathetic to this.
I understand that, but it can be a financial benefit to them.
Yes, it can.
To a degree over the years.
Yeah.
I think we need to do that as an outreach, that we better educate our residents, and it will inevitably help us, because it'll decrease the amount of pipe that we have to put in the diameter and the amount of discharge we have to our storm sewers. So I think that it's a win-win all the way around, that the people that are putting in these rain barrels are saving money, and they need to understand that it's a reduction on their sewer bill and their yearly budget. And it also helps us, because we don't have as much water pointing at one pipe.
That's true. And we could set something up, we have to advertise it in the paper, maybe on our website, and see.
Advertise on the website?
How far we get on that, yeah. And that's.
On the front board, too.
I could ask Sandy if she would come up to these, yeah.
Rich, if we could arrange it around, I mean, a lot of people don't look at the website, where everybody gets their sewer bill. So if we could put it somewhere around when we have our next newsletter go out with the sewer bill, most people will read that. So at least we're giving them the chance to get the education, and we could take it from there.
I was going to say, print flyers, I'll put them in post boxes, or mailboxes, or not mailboxes, but paper boxes, if need be.
Yeah, the newsletter will be early October, when it'll come out. Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fine, you know, we can hold it right up here, yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Rich.
Mayor, I have a question for Rich.
Sure.
Before we leave his report. Rich, do we have the, I'm going back to the Ledge Road construction that's going on, do we have the equipment to be able to flush that sewer?
We do, yes.
Okay, my next question is, is it a possibility for us to flush that sewer and have some kind of cost reduction on that bill?
If the contractor would agree to that, yes. But he has the, his contract calls for him to clean out the sewers as part of installing the new sewers, so it's up to him if he wants to do that. If he, if he wanted to come back to us and say, he would give us, if we do it, he'd give us a $1,500 credit or whatever. I have no problem with that, but you have to talk to Jason about if his people are available to do it.
I just didn't know if it would be cost-effective for us or anything.
That I don't know. I don't know what he's figuring it's going to cost him to, he most likely will, would sub that to like Aki, who we used to use a lot, to go and do that, or Great Lakes, or Lake County Sewer. I don't think that Lockhart has their own cleaning equipment for that, so he would sub it to someone. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Law Director, Mr. Bryan.
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
Moving on to department heads, all three of them will be at our next regular scheduled council meeting. Reports of municipal boards and commissions. Mr. Hips with Planning Commission.
The report tonight will be, other than we'll be reviewing the resumes that we've received for the Planning Commission seat. Thanks.
Okay. Recreation Board, the Recreation Board will meet Thursday, August 10th at 6:30 here in council chambers. Cemetery Board, Mrs. Greenlee is not present. Council President, do you have anything for Mrs. Greenlee?
No report this evening.
Reports of the Standing Committee is Mr. Magistrelli of Finance.
Yes, we had a finance meeting this evening. Everything went well. I want to thank my committee and also the Finance Director for having everything run smoothly, and that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Roads and Public Works, does anyone on that committee have anything?
Nothing more than what Rich has already said.
Okay, thank you. Health and Welfare, Mrs. Noack.
No report, Mayor.
Wages and Working Conditions, Mr. Voitish.
No report, Mayor.
Fire and Safety, Mrs. Domsalsky.
No report, Mayor.
Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Hips.
No report.
Moving on to Legislation, Brad?
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have Village of Northfield Resolution Number 201760, an emergency resolution declaring the month of August 2017 Kids Month in the County of Summit in Village of Northfield. This is something we do annually in July at the request of the county, and.
I'd like to make a motion to skip the three readings on this.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Voitish, seconded by Mr. Magistrelli to suspend the three-reading rule. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed?
Motion for passage.
Motion to pass by Mr. Voitish, seconded by Ms. Noack, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passage?
Yes.
All opposed? Next, we have Village of Northfield Resolution 201761, an emergency resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Asland Consulting LLC to provide planning services to the village in connection with the village's commercial overlay district project. And just to let everyone know, the committee did interview four candidates, and this was the unanimous selection, was Asland Consulting LLC, Rita McMahon is the principal, and her proposal, proposed scope of services are attached. The amount right now is not to exceed $5,000. There may be additional costs. If we get down the road and decide, we may need some marketing materials, but at this point, she is confident that unless we change the scope significantly, that she can complete the project for that amount. So we're excited about that, and she is excited to start. And if anyone has any questions for myself, Ms. Noack, or Mr. Hips, we'd be happy to answer them. But we're very excited to work with her and that she is interested in the project.
Mr. Hips, do you have something to add?
I would just move to suspend the three-reading rule.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hips to suspend the three-reading rule, seconded by Ms. Noack. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
Pass.
Motion by Mr. Hips to pass, seconded by Mr. Voitish, any discussion? All in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? And one question to council, we need to have a kickoff meeting for the project, and I don't know if anyone is available, everyone is available before the next council meeting on August 9th. I did reach out to Ms. McMahon today and did not hear back from her to see if she's available, but if everyone's available, I would say probably 6 o'clock, if that works, before the next regularly scheduled council meeting, so. Does that work for everyone?
That's good for me.
Okay, if she's available, I'll reach out. If not, we will try to get a different date. And my plan would also be to invite the Planning Commission to that meeting also, so that they're in the loop from the beginning, and I think would be helpful, rather than having separate meetings at this point for this part of the project, to meet together. So I will, let's plan on that meeting. If for some reason it doesn't work for her, we will call it off, and I'll let everyone know. Okay, and last, we have Village of Northfield Resolution 201762, an emergency resolution authorizing certain amendments to the 2017 appropriation resolution and/or transferring items already appropriated in that resolution. Is there a motion to suspend the three-reading rule?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Noack. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Magistrelli, seconded by Ms. Noack, for passage, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? The resolution is adopted, and that is it for the legislation this evening, Mayor.
At this time, is there old business, new business, or announcements? The mayor would like to announce that I will be on vacation next week. Council President will assume the role of the mayor for next week, so if anyone has anything, get it to Nick. And we have the clerk of court report we have to do, Brad?
I do not have that. If anyone else has it, we can certainly do that. This is the Northfield Mayor's Court Monthly Disbursement for June of 2017. Total to be dispersed $9,338.29. Total due State of Ohio, $948. Total due to the Stowe Municipal Court, $50. Total due to the City of Stowe, $27. Total dispersed for restitution, $270.19. Total due to the village, $8,120. Is there a motion for acceptance?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Voitish, seconded by Mr. Hips to accept the report. Any questions? All in favor of acceptance?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed?
Mayor, believe it or not, I do have two announcements.
Sure, Gary.
I like to talk, you know that. First off, the wedding for my daughter went very well, and all had a good time, including myself. And my youngest son went through double eye surgery first thing this morning, and he's doing well, he's resting at home now, so. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Does anyone else on the council have anything?
Yes, when we do the work session, Mayor, for the storm system, can we also put on that work session the update on the snowplow form, so that we can get that finalized?
Absolutely, I mean, if council's okay with that?
Thank you.
Don't say that. Hey, are we good? All right, are we ready for adjournment?
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Ms. Domsalsky, seconded by Mr. Voitish. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? We are adjourned at?
8:15.
8:15.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.